We in will join us later. Under ceremonies, appointments, and announcements, Monday, February 17th, President's Day, city business offices will be closed, garbage pickup will not be affected by the holiday. And if you missed attending the Black Bay Design Open House last week, you can take a survey for proposed design concepts outlined until this Friday, February 7th. A new link to the survey is on the city's Facebook page and the homepage of the city Also tonight, counsel, I would like to have counsel confirmation for the reappointment of Vicky Jo Carey to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take your role.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thank you. We will have a couple more appointments to planning, zoning, parking, recreation coming forward over the next couple of meetings. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict?
On, after visiting with our attorney, I just would like it to be known before the public hearing on the Highlands that my sister and brother-in-law live in the Highlands, so I'm familiar with the area, but I have no financial interest.
And therefore, you wouldn't have a conflict, but just to disclose that for the public. We appreciate that. Thank you. Counsel member?
I'm also going to make a disclosure. I'm going to recuse myself from ordinance's resolutions, item A, Idaho veneer zone change. Similarly, I have zero financial interest in any of that property, but people with the same last name do, so I'm going to sit that one out.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Would you please present the consent?
Oh, sorry. I'm recusing myself from the ordinance Idaho veneer zone change. While I have no financial interest in that property at all, members of my family do. So to prevent any semblance of conflict of interest, I'm sitting that one out.
Kit and Stephanie, is there any chance you can turn the volume up so these folks can hear? Hopefully, we'll make an adjustment for you. And I'm looking in my, one of my concerns is if we get too many more people, we're going to be in violation of fire code, so we may be asking people to step out or stay out, but we'll kind of watch that as we go forward. Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the January 21st, 2020, City Council meeting. Item B is payables, January 14th through January 27th, 2020. Item C is Spencer Place Apartments Construction Improvement Agreement. Item D is development and annexation agreement, master development agreement, dedication of right-of-way, and easement for the Ruby Springs annexation. Item E is the 2019 Wellhouse Projects Recommendation to Award. Item F is the 2019 Wellhouse Project Special Inspections Contract with All West Testing. Item G is Holly Troxel Engagement Letter. Item H is Plumber Force Products Edition Platt Application. Item I is Development and Annexation Agreement, Dedication of Right-of-Way and Easements for the Green Meadows First Edition Annexation. Item J is Grant of Right-of-Way along Kildare Avenue, associated with the Tullamore Eighth subdivision. And item K is the Tullamore Eighth Edition Subdivision Platt Application.
Any questions on the consent calendar? Entertained motion?
I'd move for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'm sure that's what 95% of you folks are here for. Before we open the public hearing, depending on the number of people who wish to testify, we can't have everybody lining up, so I will, when we call someone up to testify, I will let the next person know they're on deck, so we're not lining up all the way out, all right? We want to listen to all of you. The other thing I would like to mention is, we do have all the information that was submitted and the testimony from the Planning and Zoning Commission, so any emails that were sent, any letters that were sent, we have those, we have read those, those are part of the record. Lastly, I would say that if you can help it, we want to listen to everybody, and it's going to be a lengthy hearing, which is fine, but if there's any chance to not duplicate testimony that's already been given, that would be great. There's going to be some, and we understand that, but if we can try to limit that, that would be great. We would appreciate it, because we do want to listen to all of you. And everybody who wishes to testify, and I saw a whole bunch of folks signing up back there, there's our forms on the Diaz, and if you do wish to testify, please sign up and submit them to Shannon. Also, I keep saying the last item. Also, when you are testifying, please watch your clock. You get four minutes, okay? And we will shut you off at four minutes, we have to. Not that we don't want to hear you, but there is a four-minute limitation, so please watch your clock up here. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Mayor and counsel, Bob Seal, Community Development Director for the city. So the Highlands Home Assist, for assisted living special use permit appeal case file U S E 0052019. This was heard at the Planning Commission and was denied at the November 12th hearing of last year. The applicant is asking the city to reverse the planning and zoning decision and approve the request of special use permit as presented and find that the request meets the criteria for special, for approval of the special permit, special use permit. It's a single-family, it's a single-family residential, R1 zone, residential care facilities are allowed within this zone by special permit, special use permit, when they will not compromise present uses. So the location, as noted on the map, is part of that parcel. That parcel also has additional uses on it and is surrounded by the Highlands Golf Course and residential neighborhood. The project size is a 2.45 acre site. That includes the other remaining uses, which I list here in a little bit, which is essentially Florida Cell and the salon, amongst other things. The proposed use is a 16-bed, single-family, or sorry, 16-bed assisted living facility. Water and sewer provider would be the city of Post Falls. As you can see here, they would be fitting the single store, well, the building of 7400, approximately 7400 square foot footprint on a currently vacant piece of the overall parcel adjacent to existing parking lots. This is the conceptual floor plan that's been established, and as you can see, it is primarily bedrooms with half baths, with the remaining facility being used for the great room, dining areas, kitchens, the typical uses that you would find within a smaller assisted living facility. The overall zoning on the site is R1. It does carry a P U D for the overall, again, for the overall site, which is a planned unit development, which is how this site already has certain commercial uses on it. Under the current and adopted future land use map for the comprehensive plan, it does indicate that it would be good for a commercial zoning designation, but that's, again, it's just a future land use map that was adopted approximately 10 years ago. The review criteria that we'll be looking at, the implementation of a special use will or will not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district. The purpose of the residential zone is to support growth and provide housing throughout the city of Post Falls. Primarily, the residential R1 zone focuses on single-family homes on their own lot that stand alone with either an attached or detached garage. Again, this was a P U D, so in 2002, there was a minor modification that added and expanded the allowance of additional commercial uses within the P U D. So they went from having the restaurant, clubhouse, and offices to adding the day school spa, including equipment and tanning beds, treatment rooms, and a small retail store and bistro and salon to those uses that had been previously permitted as a commercial uses within the P U D. This use would also require providing the necessary commercial buffer, 15 feet from the residential neighborhood to the north. It's a compatible use to the existing commercial uses on the site, and if the proposed assisted living development is approved, it would be required to complete a site plan review process, which ensures compliance with the additional city code requirements. A parking table has been provided indicating that there are more spaces than needed on the, on the site, and it shows the allocation. Thirty-four parking spaces were set up for the spa, school, 44 were set up for the restaurant, 19 for the office, and this residential care facility would only technically require four parking spaces, leaving an overall total of 101 parking spaces required for the site, and they already provide 122. Again, through the review criteria, whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use as established by this chapter for the zoning district involved and complies with all of the applicable laws, ordinances, regulations of the city and the state. So under the land use table, the land use table contains listing, a listing for the residential care facility as an allowable special use in the R1 zone. We also want to look at whether or not the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public or with other land uses in the vicinity. We had determined that the proposed use does not have any noxious characteristics that would impact health, safety, and welfare. Transportation, not anticipated to produce many impacts that would adversely impact the adjoining transportation system. The existing roadway network can easily handle the proposed land use. East Inverness Drive is classified as a local street and provides access to East Sterling Drive, which is a local street as well, which leads to East Mullen Avenue. Access point locations and design would be reviewed and approved at the time of the site plan. Now whether, now we also look at whether the proposed uses will or will not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. So policy number five calls out the neighborhoods and centers should be compact, pedestrian-oriented, and mixed-use when possible. This proposal is pedestrian-oriented and is compatible with the pre-existing uses on site, being the Highlands Golf Course, Highlands Day Spa, and Florida Cell Restaurant. Residential care facility would add to the existing mix of uses of the community as mentioned above. Policy number seven, encourage a balance of land uses and help Post Falls remain desirable, stable, and sustainable community. As the city of Post Falls continues to grow and more older adults become attracted to this area, this facility, these facilities will be needed to support that specific population. Sam Wilkenhour from the Department of Labor provided data recently stating that growth from 2008, 2018 has increased by 93% for adults between the ages of 75 and 79, as well as 80% for adults between the ages of 70 and 74. So you see that additional massive growth within that age group. Policy number 10 is growth strategies should encourage infill development of property within the city. This development would be considered infill if approved by, with, if approved, and by it would be diverting additional development from occurring along the periphery of the city or through peripheral annexation of lands. The addition of the residential care facility may also add additional jobs to this area. Policy number one is throughout the community, a range of housing types and price levels should be provided to accommodate diverse ages and incomes, providing effective affordable housing. So I want to note that this is under residential policies versus overall policies. So this development would be considered in, oh, sorry. Majority of the Highland Park Estates include single-family homes that are adjacent to the Highlands Golf Course. This residential care facility would provide another housing type in the area, adding to its special use to the overall community. This use targets older adults and provides living options for them. Under residential policies, again, is policy number five, encourage compatible infill development in all neighborhoods based on policies found in the comprehensive plan and proposed future land uses. Residential care facility is still providing housing, but at a higher use, and will be compatible between the existing commercial uses to the south and the single-family homes to the north. This proposal actually acts as a buffer between the commercial and single-family homes. Proposed conditions, complete site plan review of the project to comply with the applicable code, so if you were to approve it, and these are some proposed conditions that could be placed on it, complete the site plan review of the project to comply with the applicable code requirements. Additionally, consideration should be given to improving and constructing a swale for stormwater from Inverness in the parking lot per the standards of the time of the development. All beds to serve this assisted living facility shall be located on the first floor of the building. Three, the second story shall be no greater than 50% of the footprint of the first floor and shall be utilized for storage or office uses. Again, those are simply conditions that we felt may be something that the council would want to apply to if they were to approve this type of facility. So you have options for approving the request of special use permit as presented, deny the request of special use, or approve the request of special use with additional conditions. Agencies were notified. Cooney County Fire and Rescue was neutral on the project, they were the only ones who responded, and I just wanted to put up here that the conditions, if you were to put conditions on it, they would typically fall within this list as to how they would be applied. And kind of noting that since this is a special use permit, we are allowed to put conditions on it. If the applicant were to decide to go the other route, which would be to build two separate eight-bed facilities, which is allowed as of right, there would be no ability to apply additional conditions on it. We wouldn't be able to restrict its location, the setback from the northern property line could be up to five, could be as close as five feet. We can't require buffering, we can't require fencing, we can't require restrictions of lighting, and they would be allowed to build up to 35 feet in height, which is approximately three stories. So that is something that, at least under the special use permit, we do have the ability to apply these criteria to it in order to reduce the impact on neighboring residential uses. Any questions?
Questions, Bob.
Bob, you took, you mentioned a minor modification to the P U D.
Correct.
It was done earlier.
Yes.
Would this require a similar modification?
This doesn't because it's permitted in the, it's permitted in the R1 zone by a special use permit, and this is an R1 zone.
Okay, thanks.
Kerry.
It was awfully small, even though I was looking from here, but in the parking spaces? I know it, the total.
Total, sure.
Was exceeded, but I was looking in the, across for the 16-bed.
Yes.
Was it four spaces?
It's one bed per, or one parking space for four beds. So the idea, typically with the assisted living facility like this, residents typically do not have automobiles, and so that's why we usually do not require, you know, many, very many parking spaces for a facility like this.
Where does that information come from?
Where does that information come from?
The parking standard, the number of stalls per use. You haven't?
It's generally accepted, again, the four cities I've worked for, the other ones have been three parking spaces per unit, this one happens to be four. I think that we actually took this four from Coeur d'Alene, so.
So, not to belabor the point, but where are the people who work there, is that another line there?
No. No, it falls under the four. However, they do have an additional 21 parking spaces on site, so they could technically say, which I believe is in their presentation, that they allocate 25 parking spaces for this structure. The fact that they will probably never use 25 parking spaces is, you know, part of that argument, but.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I think that was my question, and I think you answered it, that even though we require four, there's an extra 22 just that could be used for the facility then.
Correct.
Okay.
And.
Lena.
No, just so that I understand this correctly, the two eight-bed homes can be built just with a residential permit from the planning department, from the building department?
So, yes, they are, it is, it is a protected use, and they are allowed under, under the law to build an eight-bed facility as of right, is basically treated as a single-family home.
And so the minimum lot size up there, I believe, is 6,500 square feet in the city?
I believe that is correct, yes.
And so to build a home with eight bedrooms on a 6,500 square foot lot?
Mm-hmm.
I think if, if anybody, well, I'm just trying to imagine it, and I would say it would have to be several stories high, so.
It could be.
Okay.
Well, and as I noted, it could be up to 35 feet tall.
And five feet from the property line?
Side property line, yes.
And so, one more question. Is the, is the boundary on the north side of this property considered the back boundary line or the side?
It would be the side.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Joe?
Do we know if it is the intent of the applicant to build two buildings if this single building is not approved?
That, that idea has been floated, yes.
Second. Mr. Cafferty, you have something to add?
So I would just add for the council's edification and for the audience as well, please keep in mind, I referenced the joint statement by Housing and Urban Development and Department of Justice from November of 2016, assisted living facilities such as this application cannot be discriminated against due to the age or disability of the future residents. And so the approval or denial of this request must be based upon the facts applied to the four criteria that were previously stated for you. And, you know, actions, according to this joint statement by Department of Justice and HUD, actions cannot be based, actions being the decision, cannot be based upon fears, prejudices, stereotypes, or unsubstantiated assumptions that community members may have. So just keep that in mind. Any decision you make needs to be based clearly upon the four standards and the facts that apply to that, so.
Okay. Pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Counsel, my name is Sandy Young. I am the president of Verdis, and we're the land use planning firm that is representing the developer tonight. So Highlands Home is a residential care facility, and this is a request to construct a 16-bed residential care facility for elderly persons that require limited assistance with daily living. This request was heard, as mentioned, on November 12th before the Planning Commission, and they recommended, or they decided denial based upon the premise that the proposed use would not support the residences in the area. And I know you have this information in your file, but I would like to state for the record, the Planning Commission made the following findings. This proposal isn't allowed special use and complies with all other applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations of city and state. It is compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public and other land uses in the vicinity. It would provide six times more parking than the city requires. It would not negatively impact adjoining property values, and again, these are all findings that I took from the Planning Commission's report. It would not result in drug dealing or other types of criminal activity as stated in neighborhood testimony. It would provide another type of residential use in an area of mixed commercial and residential uses. It would provide a compact, pedestrian-oriented, and mixed-use neighborhood. It would provide a different type of residence that fits into a mixed-use neighborhood. And I think most importantly, it fills a critical niche in the housing and care for the community, which is necessary to keep Post Falls a desirable, stable, and sustainable These are also the con-plan goals. Some of these were included in the director's presentation, but I've, I've taken these again right from Planning Commission's report. I don't need to read through each one, but overall policy five supports, overall policy six, the preferred pattern of development, overall policy seven, it encourages a balance of land uses so that Post Falls will remain desirable, stable, and a sustainable community. Overall policy 10, residential policy one, and then residential policy two, all supported by this request. Mr. Cafferty alluded to the law, and Idaho Code 676531 states that for the purpose of any zoning law, a single-family dwelling shall include group residents in which eight or few, fewer unrelated persons with disabilities or elderly person reside and who are supervised. That's exactly what this request is tonight. You have five such facilities in Post Falls. I think we're all familiar with the ones right along Mullen, the two, three, and four, but one and five are also in residential neighborhoods. Number one's on Catherine Street, and number two is in Riverside Harbor, and you approved that with a special use permit in 2011 with no conditions. There's the Lodge at Riverside Harbor is in this neighborhood, and Living Springs, which has been around a long time and is illegal non-conforming use, is located on Just gives you an idea, and I took this from Stephanie's presentation at the last hearing, the average age of a senior living resident is 84. They need some help with daily activities. This is not a medical facility. Highlands Home will provide elderly people the opportunity to live in a home within a neighborhood setting. My conclusion, before I go on to some, again, suggested conditions, just as the director had, is that it provides an alternative housing option, fits in with the character of the neighborhood in its design and use. There are commercial businesses and residential homes adjacent to this home, and that it will allow residents to still feel like they're part of a neighborhood, providing a place to be close to family. We've added these suggested conditions of approval, and these just come from my days as a planner with the county, my 10 years there. If I were the planner on this, I would have put these in for you to, to consider. A 15-foot wide vegetative buffer with a minimum tree height of six feet when planted and a minimum size of five-gallon shrubs all along that northeast residential property line. So now we've got a 15-foot setback instead of the five-foot setback, which is an outright allowed use. A site disturbance and landscape plan that's stamped by a design professional. If a single-family home is built, if two or more structures are built on this site and house eight, 16, 32, whatever number is able to be accommodated on that site, those plans would not be required. All outdoor lighting will be downward directed and shielded to prevent glare. Lighting at the property line shall measure no more than .2-foot candles and shall meet International Dark Sky Association lighting standards. Again, that was always a standard I used at the county in the, on the projects that I worked on. Bedrooms located on the first floor, and the site plan will dedicate 25 parking spaces. We wouldn't plan for those to actually be signed. That way, if there's overflow from floor or the spa, those 25 spaces are open. And that is, that is my conclusion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt you for a moment? Before you start? Given the large number of public that are here and the likelihood that many of them have not appeared at public hearings before, I think it's important for the public to be aware that we have a certain order we go in, we allow those in favor to speak first. The reason I mention that, and followed by those who are non-committed, and then finally those who are opposed, it's important that if they haven't filled out a form to speak, that they do that now so that we can place them in the proper order in order to ensure the due process rights of the parties involved, so.
Thank you. Everybody in?
Speak now.
I'm gonna take that as a yes. Thank you. Okay. In opposition, not wish, wishing to speak Suzanne Rents, a couple of houses in the property would benefit our community much more than a assisted living facility. facility. You all may not lose sleep over the decision if you pass this, but we all will. Please save our wonderful neighborhood. In opposition, Robert Leck, I hope I pronounced that name properly. In opposition, Diane James. In opposition, Terry and Marcia Saunders. In opposition, Richard and Andrea, Andre Lean. In opposition, Linda Dixon. In opposition, Brenda Betstolz. Hope I got that right. Opposed to building an assisted-living facility as it doesn't benefit the community, will add traffic and isn't what the community was intended for, single-family residential living. And Dennis Buknovis? Again, I apologize if I butcher your names. Comment is no is no.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, there were no public in favor or non-committed?
No one in favor and no one neutral. Wishing to testify, and again, I'm gonna call one, and I'm gonna tell the next person who's on deck, all right? So we, and there's a chair right next to Mr. Paulus up front. If you wish to come up and sit there. So the first up will be Peter Smith, followed by, and I really appreciate this, Robert Imel, and he actually put the phonetic, so thank you very much. Because I would have butchered your name, sir. But sir, if you want to come up and sit in this front seat there, and after Mr. Smith, you'll be up. Mr. Smith?
Mayor and Counsel, my name is Peter Smith. I am an attorney with Smith &amp; Malik in Coeur d'Alene. I live at three eight-eight-six Yelo View Court, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho eight-three-eight-one-four. I stand before you representing my clients, Mr. and Mrs. Levy. That's Eric and Luisa Levy. They are residents of the Highland Park Estates, and I have two specific legal points that I want you to consider as you're looking at the question before you. The question before you is whether you're going to affirm the decision of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission made two key observations that I think you should keep in mind. Number one is that the original planned unit development or PUD for this neighborhood contemplated this Lot One of Block One to serve the neighborhood with limited commercial activity, including a restaurant at that point in time and the clubhouse. That use was specifically called out in the PUD, and then when it came up for re, or a modification, a minor modification in 2002, that was recognized again that the uses that would be made for this PUD in, on this particular lot would serve the neighbors. The use that you're being asked to consider tonight is one that doesn't serve the neighbors. Rather, it's for people to come and live in an assisted-living facility. I would suggest to you that legally, you would need to go through a different process to have this use approved, and that would be an amendment to the PUD. We're not here on an amendment to the PUD, and your code, your municipal code specifically addresses that. So for that particular reason, which was pointed out in the Planning Commission's decision, I don't think this is the appropriate procedure legally for you to consider this request. Special use permit is for the use of a lot. The second point that I'd like to make is that this is one lot, and they're proposing to put multiple buildings on it. If you read your R-one zoning code, it anticipates an individual structure being located on each individual lot. The Idaho Supreme Court has made it clear that if you want to change the use of a property by adding a structure, the bulk of the structure, the height of the structure pursuant to the zoning ordinance, that you must go through a variance process. That's stated in Idaho statute, and the case I'm referring to was a 2012 case wherein the ordinance said you could do the changing of a structure, building height, by special use permit. The Idaho Supreme Court said, "We don't care what the ordinance said. You need to go through the variance process." Here, they're being asked to add multiple structures to a single lot, which your zoning code has specific requirements for the residential lot, and the Planning Commission pointed out that the intent of that ordinance was to allow one structure per lot. So again, what we're here tonight for is a special use permit, but what would be appropriate is a variance process pursuant to Idaho Code and your municipal ordinances. For those two legal reasons, the decision of the Planning Commission was correct, and it should be affirmed by the council. Unless you have any questions, that concludes my presentation to you.
Thank you, Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Imel is next, followed by Scott Johnson.
Okay, I have a few comments to make. Thank you. My name's Robert Imel. I live on East Sterling. And I brought my little aide here. So, would you help me?
Sure.
Okay. Just stand up, please. Okay, I'm gonna show you what five feet is. It's right there. Now, I'm gonna back up to this wall if you walk this way. Okay, that was one of the numbers I heard.
Sir, please, please try, I know you're showing, but please try to speak to the microphone so we can record this, please.
Or I'll just speak real loud.
Perfect.
Okay, that's five feet. I heard that, that references the separation from other, other people's property. Now, let's go out to ten. This is the one that was used at the Planning Commission. Okay, that's ten feet. And the one that I heard tonight was fifteen feet, so let's go to fifteen. Ah, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Okay, this would be the offset from the property line of two existing very nice houses. This wall is probably, what, sixteen feet high? And this building can go up to thirty-five feet? Can you envision thirty-five feet up this far from their property line? I think that's gonna affect their property value, but I'm not sure. I think it would ruin their property value, for want of a truth. And that would cascade throughout the whole Highlands. The fresh, French restaurant and the spa are assets to this community. I don't see any asset to the community in this proposal. There are five retirement facilities already. Couple of them are in residential areas, but when were they put there? Were they, did the residential area grow around it? Or did they actually take a space, clear it out, and say, "This is gonna be there"? I don't know. But it's something that I think needs to be looked at. If you have residents that are ambulatory and want to walk, they gotta realize we have no speed zones, no signs. We do not have crosswalks. The sidewalks are only one side of the street. If you want to go through one of the little roads that cuts off, there's no crosswalk. They can't be on the golf course. That's golfers only. And we have golf balls flying around. I don't think it's that safe. Now, I hate to do this, but the purpose of the town council is very simple. They're supposed to operate other people, by the people, and for the people. Of the people, that's you. You represent the people. Your decisions are binding on the people. If I go a little further and I say, "By the people," that's what this is all about. These are the people. This is by the people. They get to state what they think. And the third one is for the people. These are the people. They're gonna give you their opinions. If you decide to go with a corporation out of Texas, that's your decision. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Mayor, I would just clarify that.
Please.
The council is not here on a popularity contest. The council is here to decide what facts support and apply to the four criteria for a special use permit. And so, regardless of where the residents reside, where the applicant resides, the physical limitations or abilities of the residents, either inside or outside of the neighborhood, those aren't within the four criteria. And so, it's important to remember that those are the factors for decision, not whether you like it or not.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could I ask Counsel a question on the?
Yes.
Mr. Smith's commentary?
Yes.
He indicated multiple buildings on this property, is my understanding?
I think he was referring to the existing plus the new, which would be multiple buildings.
Oh, okay.
That's right.
My understanding.
The request is for one building, right? Okay.
I got a nod from Mr. Smith, so I think that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, next up is Mr. Scott Johnson, and, and followed by, is it Chuck Bolts?
Close enough.
Close enough. Thank, thank you for your tolerance. Name, and name it for the record, please.
Scott Johnson. I live at seven fifty-one Aberdeen Court. We're the second court over from the facility being proposed there. Our biggest complaint is my wife's in healthcare, and you, you know, EMTs and all of them are gonna be coming in twenty-four hours a day there. They're gonna come up and down that Sterling Drive. It's even tonight's, it's pretty rough over there. And it's, as this other gentleman said before me, there's no sidewalks there. There's really not enough parking there, and it's really unfair to the houses that have bought there to the north side to have thirty-five feet right in front of them. They have no privacy of their backyard. Anywhere in their house will be, it will be gone. And I agree with, I've been in real estate for years and an appraiser. Those values, those houses are gonna drop substantially. And I don't care, I don't care what, who says what. I know for a fact I was an appraiser in Bellevue for years. That's gonna happen, and it's not a good thing. Our ordinance is up there in the Highlands also for years. We bought there for a reason, and because we like the cleanliness of the existing houses that are there. We weren't, we didn't buy there because there's gonna be a facility next to us. And I know they got all these other facilities down on Mullen. They should stay down on Mullen. They shouldn't be coming up our area, 'cause as you come up Sterling in the wintertime, if there's an emergency up there, they might not make it. Because they don't take care of that road as good as they should. And they're gonna have to really take care of it if they got a facility up there. Because they've got a certain amount of time to get to those facilities. And EMTs and all these people have to make sure that they get there. But our biggest complaint about having the facility there is not that it wouldn't be detrimental to the area and all that stuff, basically is the height limitation, because if, if, I didn't know this till tonight, if, if they split in half and have two eights, you're gonna have thirty-five footers. If you leave it alone, they're all single-family, which is probably twelve, fourteen feet. Thirty-five feet on a, on a single lot like that, it's just too tight. Nobody wants to live that close together, unless you're assisted living. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Could I ask just gentlemen a couple of questions? Sir, you mentioned that there would be an increase in emergency vehicles. Do you base that on anything in fact, or any?
I don't base it on any fact. I know, 'cause we used to have it in Bellevue where we used to live in Seattle. Oh, we had, they had a assisted living down at the bottom of the hill, and they were there all the time. We could hear them all the way up the hill.
Okay.
And, and I, when I was in the meeting last time, I didn't understand this. Somebody said that they were supposed to shut their noise makers off at the bottom of the hill before they climb. I don't believe that's true. I'd like to see, I'd like to see that in writing.
I would just like to make a comment. We spend time over at Garden Plaza Assisted Living, and quite frequently, we see emergency vehicles there, and I have never, in the last five years, seen one come in under running code with lights and sirens. They all, always shut them off when they come in.
Okay. Well, it's a little different than a question.
And also, go ahead, Al.
One other question, because I know this came up in a lot of the letters. You mentioned property values. Again, a question of, do you have any basis for the property values throughout the entire Highlands are gonna diminish because of this, this particular project?
I don't think it's gonna diminish the rest of the Highlands, but in, in that area there where the apartments are on the corner there, I mean, the condos on the corner there, and the ones adjacent to it will, will, will be hit hard. I don't think it'll hit, hit the north end where, where the clubhouse is on the other end of the, of the, of the community there. I don't think it'll affect that at all.
That, that's an opinion on, based on your experience as an appraiser?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for clarification, the, I think the comment was made that if it was a single eight-bed facility, it would be allowed under current code to go up to thirty-five feet. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe it's the intention of this project to go up to thirty-five feet. If they came back with separate facilities, they could go up to thirty-five feet, but that's not the intent on this project.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, sir. Sir, is it Mr. Bolts Butts?
No, Chuck Butts.
Butts. See, I, I knew I had two chances, and I blew them both times, so I apologize.
You certainly did.
Who's on deck, Mr. Mayor?
I'm joking. You know, uh...
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, sir. One second. Mr. Wa, Wafera? Wavera? Wavera. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Butts?
To the people who live on the north side of this property, ain't no sunshine in your life. And, and moving on, you know, thinking about Groundhog Day. I think we went through this once before. How many times do they get to keep appealing this? Over and over forever? That's, you know, that's it. I mean, either you're hoping we're all gonna be dead, and there'll be young people moving in who'll want to put their grandparents there. I'm, I'm not sure. The, the thing is, is this whole entire community was built as a golf community, period. It was not built with the anticipation of two lots not being sold, or two lots that were put into a business area being turned over to be put into a, a, a special project that we can go ahead and turn into a nursing home or a long-term care home. Thing you have to remember about this is there's, there's, there's no acuity in, in the state of Idaho. So when they say they're building a, a senior care facility, well, when you, when, when the census drops, and they got somebody that's a little, not so much that, they'll end up slamming in there, because there is no acuity in the state of Idaho for how these people are going to be booked in and out. As for the firefighters, I can promise you this, this is the best state in the world for firefighters. Okay? When you look at the age group and these people being, you know, average age of eighty-four, yeah, good luck. There're gonna be ambulances up there a lot. Why? If, if one of the caretakers misses them and they fall, they're going to the hospital more than likely, which means there's a fire truck showing up and more than likely, and an ambulance. So, I mean, this just goes on and on. And I mean, you can probably figure twice a week at minimum that this will be happening. It, it just, it just doesn't work out. I mean, it's a golf community. That's what it was built as, it's a golf community, and that's what we want to keep it as. The other, I'm trying to read my notes. Okay. If they try and go the two-houses route, then they gotta make sure that they build them as two complete houses. They can't modify them to begin with. My real thing, and from the last meeting that I was at here, went around and started looking around. Ideally, the area behind the, the unemployment office there, ideal area. Ideal area, because you also have a nursing hospital across the street. You've got a huge area that can be built on there, and that's really ideal for this sort of thing, because that can be developed. You're not slamming something in and trying to make it fit. Expand it and make it work for the community, not for, "They bought the houses." I mean, sell, sell the land or turn it over to somebody and let them build two spec houses there, and you guys will come out quite sweet. But, you know, putting them up there and saying, "Well, they're gonna be tucked in there with all those nice people, and those people are gonna love them." These people aren't gonna love them. We're old. For Christ's sakes, we're all worried about our mortality, and you're gonna shove it in our face. This is where you're gonna end up, or you're gonna end up grave.
Time's up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wavera's up, followed by Bruce Kaufman.
Good evening. My name is Steve Wavera.
Okay.
I'm a resident, I live at seven fifteen North Muirfield Court in the Highlands. As homeowners and residents of the Highlands, my wife and I strongly oppose the development of an assisted-living facility in our beautiful golfing neighborhood. The facility will surely create many negative impacts and is totally inappropriate for this community. There must be other locations. However, what's going on here, and I'm gonna go away from my notes, we've got a company in Texas that owns the property here, and they want to make a lot of money off of our location. I believe the dictionary defines that as carpet bagging. I wasn't gonna use that term, but it is. Okay? The facility would negatively affect the property values up there. I don't care what you say, it's not just gonna be at that end of the neighborhood. It's gonna be all the way to the, the clubhouse. Property values either will never go up, or they're gonna go down. On November twelfth nineteen, or 2019, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the proposed sixteen-bed facility, and they did the right thing. According to the original proposal, the facility would consist of sixteen-bed... According to the original proposal, the facility would consist of sixteen bedrooms of less than two hundred square feet each. And I have a storage, a small storage building in my backyard that's that size. This is, okay, we'd also have a kitchen, dining room, and miscellaneous common areas. In our minds, these are minimal requirements, and also border on elder abuse, as far as I'm concerned. Especially if you take into consideration the exorbitant prices that they're gonna be charged for that care. Okay, this twenty-four-hour care facility is a commercial venture that does not service our community. It does not comply with the city of Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, which describes the Highlands as, and I quote, "a golf course development with some of the community's highest value homes." This area is expected to remain relatively unchanged over the plan's life cycle. A stable, single-family neighborhood enjoying a distinctive identity. And that's a golfing identity. "We purchased our retirement home in the Highlands because of its golf course and beautiful neighborhood of single-family residences. We would really hate to see this wonderful community degraded because of this high-density assisted living medical facility proposed by an out-of-state developer attempting to maximize their profits at our expense. We really feel that this development neither fits into Post Falls Comprehensive Plan nor the Highlands' distinguished golfing neighborhood. We seriously request that you disregard Idaho Code 67-6531 for this development as inappropriate for this community, and revoke any and all current and future permits for this planned development." Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Kaufman is up, and Andrew Levinson is on deck.
My name is Bruce Kaufman. I'm at 4340 Inverness. I live in a house with Audrey Oats directly across the street from the proposed lot, well, from the lot that we're talking about. It makes a number of questions come to mind, one of which is, there's argument that this facility will have a buffer between it and the nearby residential facilities, which clearly doesn't apply to those who live just on the other side of the street. How can you build a buffer there? Another point is the pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. That's one of the goals and objectives, but you have to consider, one side of the street has no sidewalk, so I already mentioned no pedestrian crossings, there's no ADA curb cuts, there's no, I don't know if there's a requirement to clear the sidewalk, but there's no one clearing the sidewalk of snow and debris. And again, no crosswalks. The Sterling Drive comes directly up the hill, and where pedestrians would cross, there's not so much as a speed limit sign. One of my points, the Sterling Drive and Inverness Drive was mentioned as local streets, not collectors, not arterials. And I think that's the fact. It connects the neighborhood from one side to the county, to the county roads. The bottom of Sterling Drive where it meets Mullen is a county street until it goes a block down into the city. As a county street, it's not subject to the improvements that city streets are. City annexations, when a new area is to be added to the city, you can't do a shoestring annexation or a non-contiguous annexation. And yet, the entire community up there is not continuously connected to the city except for a narrow strip of county road. And I think that makes it subject to, because it was developed some time ago, I think that is another indicator of how the current standards of the city are not met as it is. And to say that this new facility will meet the existing standards is not true. The whole neighborhood doesn't meet the existing development standards. You see that when you come up Sterling Drive, and the street has been plowed, and there's emergency turnouts, and no snow was removed from the emergency turnouts, it was three feet high. So if there was an emergency, you know, we're not meeting the existing standards. We're not going to improve things by adding an additional use there. And one more point, if you were, if you provide a special use for this sixteen-bed facility on the existing lot, making it a second building on that lot, will there be room for additional buildings on the same lot? I thought residential R1 was one building per lot with a minimum lot size. So if you subdivide that thing up into two, maybe three lots, can you bulldoze the existing building and make something else there? I mean, we're talking about a sixteen-bed facility. Will the special use permit preclude renovating the existing building or adding additional facilities? That's just something to think about in this, in the future. We're, you know, we're going with a future land use plan that was adopted ten years ago. I'm curious to see what that incorporates. But I would point out, though, that this, this portion of the city is not even connected to the city except by a tree hillside.
Thank you, sir. Christopher Levinson. On deck is Audrey Oats.
Hi, I'm Andrew Levinson, and I'm gonna start, I have a lifetime hearing loss, I have two hearing aids. I couldn't hear ninety, ninety-five percent of what was at the underlying hearing, and I'm missing about ninety-eight percent of what's happening at this hearing. So I can't see what other people were saying. I can't respond to them, 'cause you all have microphones, and you stand back like this, so I can't hear anything. So it's just, I can't respond at this hearing. I'm against the development, it's bad, but I can't say what other people have said, because I'm being deprived of the chance to be able to hear, because you don't make it properly. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks, sir. Audrey Oats, followed by Don Johnson.
My name is Audrey Oats, and I live at 4340 Inverness Drive. I live about forty-five yards from where this building will begin. That means that when there are, when there are facility keepers who will come, there'll be pee cleaners, there'll be people that will come, be coming to attend to the persons that are living there. They will be driving right on my driveway, right up to that building. And this, for me, initiates a substantial amount of concern. For one thing, I'm pushing that ninety mark. And I would like to have a life where I could feel safe and secure. And quite frankly, my husband spent a hundred and twenty days in one of these facilities. And so when I hear this circumstance of, oh, it doesn't make any difference in the neighborhood, it does make a difference. And I did see fire engines, and I did see ambulances, and I did see people coming all time of the day and night. And I did see people discussing the concern of the medications that were coming into the facility, and the kind of people that it brought around to that particular area. So this facility, there, I, when I listened to it being explained at the beginning tonight, all I could think of the fictitious remarks that were being made. Because I live there, I see what goes on there, and I know what kind of an impact it's going to have on my life. It isn't something that I conjured up overnight. We, my husband and I, this was our life savings. We bought this house predicated on many of the remarks that were made here tonight. And I am not in a position to go buy another home tomorrow. And yet, I'm going to be forced, if these people are allowed to build this facility, I am going to be forced into a very poor living circumstance, which I assume that when I have people in my community who are looking out for my welfare, that they are looking out for my welfare. That's why they get my vote. Because I think we are putting people in positions who will see that circumstances like this do not happen. That we have outside investors coming in and hoping to make multitudes of money by putting the rest of our lives in jeopardy. And I'm sorry, I have a little bit emotional here. This is a difficult thing for me to discuss, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt you for just a moment? The last speaker, Mr. Levinson, I believe was his name, had mentioned that he was having difficulty hearing and was having a hard time participating. I would just note, excuse me, as the notice states, anyone with a disability, we encourage them to reach out to the city in advance, twenty-four hours in advance, so we can make that accommodation. We have special hearing equipment. If anybody needed it, we're happy to provide that, but we need the advance notice so we can get that ready for them and have it available.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm speaking for him, 'cause he can't...
That's, that's okay, that's okay, that's okay. But we can't, during a public testimony, we can't have it. Is there any...
It's a little late.
Excuse me, sir, it's public hearing. If you're gonna speak, you need to sign up, you need to come to the microphone. I'm trying to resolve and see if we can get it taken care of for him.
Just to, just to respond, and it's unfortunate that we were not able to satisfy his needs. He did call us in advance. We did ask him to stop by. He came by the office. We have two types of assisted listening devices, and he did not like either one. He felt that his own hearing aid was better than what we were able to offer him. And what we have is kinda standard. We have a neck loop, and we have the earbuds one that operates with the little one that's like a Walkman. And we tested both of them out as soon as we got the phone call. They sounded fine to us, but I don't have a hearing problem, so I don't know. But we did our best to assist him, and I regret that, that he felt like he didn't get what he needed.
And I apologize for anybody who's, who has a hearing disability, but again, we've got a few devices, and unfortunately, they didn't work, so I do apologize for that. As I recall, Don Johnson, followed by Louisa Levy? Levy? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, some of the things that I was gonna say are already said. They must have checked...
Excuse me, I introduced you, but would you give your name for the record?
Oh, 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 Don Johnson, 4320 East Sterling Drive.
Thank you.
And Post Falls. So I might repeat some things that were said. They checked my notes, so they took them away from me. It's called plagiarism, but in any event. I don't unders, I don't understand why it is that somebody from Texas decides to take and put an assisted living place in a community that was designed to be a golf course community. I could understand the individual saying, I need to add something to the value of this community by adding something that the residents could utilize up there. Like, for instance, they could, they could add a health club, or they could add a coffee shop, or a little bistro, or something like that, that actually could be used, and the residents have already said, yeah, we would use those kinds of things up there. But he comes in with this. Why does, is he, if this gets refused, can he come back and say, well, I wanna build a real estate office on that piece of land? And I, I don't understand all these real estate questions and everything, but then I wonder if we give him the ability to put an assisted living place on that whole piece of property, can he then change the use of the other building that's on that property to make that a healthcare place, too? And make the whole thing up there, on that whole corner, a big healthcare thing? And we already have vehicles that come up there, people have heart attacks, and these vehicles come up there, and the lights are shining and everything. But the average age of everybody isn't eighty, but over there, it's gonna be eighty. And so there's gonna be a lot of that stuff going on, back and forth and everything. And it's just, I just think it's inappropriate. I've been living there now for over twenty-five years, and I came there because it's a golf course community. And I just don't see why somebody from outside of the area says, you know what you guys need up there? You need an assisted living place to add to your, the value of your community, instead of coming up there saying, you know, let's add something that adds value. What do you guys even think? Nobody's even had any questions asked of anybody. They just say, this is what we wanna put in, into your community. And I don't understand it at all. And I don't understand how he can do that, and then you guys can all turn him down. But then he can come back and say, I'm gonna do something a little bit different. They keep coming back, and coming back, and coming back with some other way to make some money off of that piece of property, a guy from Texas. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Louise is up, followed by Edwin Corey.
Hello, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Luisa Levy. I live at 771 North Sky Court in Post Falls, Idaho, 83854. I'm here to present the petition. So we began collecting a petition in October 2019, and by the time of the hearing in November, we had collected two-hundred-and-sixty-two signatures and presented them at the last meeting. We went door-to-door, verified signatures, and made sure that, that there were no duplicates. We went to an online petition when the weather went bad, and also to reach the out-of-state people who were outside vacationing. So we had an overwhelming response. We collected three-hundred-and-twelve signatures, and that represents signatures coming from two-hundred-and-three houses. Now, there are about two-hundred-and-sixty-three houses that are eligible to vote, and two-hundred-and-sixteen responding out of two-hundred-and-sixty-three gives us a responder rate of eighty-two percent. And this is a very big response rate when you consider the Kootenay County election in November had a seventeen-point-five percent responder voter turnout rate. So in terms of the number of people we reached, not households, but people, three-hundred-and-twenty-five people were contacted and came forth. Three-hundred-and-twelve voted no. Thirteen voted yes for various reasons. Either they abstained for religious reasons, didn't want to get involved in politics, or they were in favor. We counted all of those as in favor, as yes. So that gives us a rejection rate of ninety-six percent of people opposing this facility. So if you look at the three-hundred-and-twelve votes that represent two-hundred-and-three houses, this represents seventy-seven percent of the Highlands, all of whom say no. Okay? So this is a public hearing, and this is the opinion of the public. So this petition affirms overwhelmingly that the residents in this small community are opposed to the placement of this facility in our Highlands. We are not opposed to assisted living facilities in general. They are needed in the community. I'm a neurologist. I care for these patients with Alzheimer's. I have sympathy and empathy and know what it's like. But there are places that are better in Post Falls, along bus routes, in more easily accessible areas. In terms of planning, there are just so many better areas than on this little peninsula up in the Highlands in a plateau with a hairpin turn in single-family residential area. So we ask that you uphold the planning and zoning committees' five-to-one vote to reject this sixteen-bed proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Mr. Corey, followed by Joy Rogers.
Councilman, Mr. Mayor, my name is Ed Corey. I live at 760 Chisholm Court, Highlands. The developer implied that this proposal of theirs will be compatible with the other commercial activities on that property. The other commercial activities have opening and closing hours, days that they're closed. Nobody lives there. They're commercial enterprises. The proposal for a sixteen-unit, in essence, is a sixteen-unit multifamily apartment building with the ancillary advantage of having onsite healthcare. There's two vacant lots in the Highlands. If I were to buy one, could I also use that argument as a premise of building a duplex or a two-story fourplex? It is a multifamily development that they're, that they're proposing, and a lot of talk from them has been trying to put lipstick on a pig. It's still a multifamily. It's long-term rental. It's not like a hospital where you check in and they scoot you out in ten minutes or ten days. They're separate families. It's not a multi, it is a multifamily unit. It's not a single family, as R1 zoning would mandate. And I think it's a real bad fit for our neighborhood based on those facts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joy Rogers, followed by Ryan Morgan?
Thank you. Joy Rogers at 5,000 Inverness Drive, Post Falls. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak again today. I guess I want to first say that I was shocked about the appeal. You know, we had the overwhelming response at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with the number of residents who came forward to oppose a special use permit, and the commissioners did vote against five-to-one, so I really thought this would be over. So today, you've heard several different comments, which some may sound a little duplicate, but I just wanted to reaffirm a couple of those for you. The proposed facility does not conform or fit into the residential R1 as it currently stands. It's in the zoning district. That's why they are applying for an SUP. It is a golf course community, as many have mentioned, and that was what it was intended for. That's what our community is for and why these people are here today. That is one of the main reasons why my husband and myself moved here three years ago. As noted in my prior statement back in the commission meeting, the PUD that's been mentioned, yes, there was an amendment to that with some slight modifications in 2002. But you have to remember that this was a golf course that had been redeveloped and expanded, and so the facility for the clubhouse and the grill had all been moved. And so they had wanted to be able to allow some other facilities and services that us as members in the community could use, which would be the clubhouse, the grill, the spa, the massage place, and the restaurants. The proposed SUP for the facility, it does not fit the criteria and has absolutely no benefit to the hundreds of people that are here with us today and the residents of our neighborhood. The property is not commercially zoned, and we wish to maintain the current residential zoning. Also noted before and in the prior presentation, there are actually two other care facilities within two to three miles of where my home is currently today. Therefore, I don't see any other reason or a benefit to have one in our neighborhood. If an SUP was allowed, what kind of precedence does that send then for other potential commercial uses in this neighborhood? So please take that into consideration. The request that I understand that doesn't comply with the City of Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, which was already mentioned, that this is a golf course development, this is in your plan, and it was for the community's high-valued homes, and my neighbors are here, and I know the homes that would be next to this 16-bed facility. The statement was made by the development company that the physical values could, may or may not be changed. That wasn't, I don't think it will. That is not a fact, okay? We all have an opinion, and I firmly believe, and if we had an assessment done, that if this facility was there, specifically those homes that are next to this, their values will go down. And how market value is assessed, then that would take into consideration all of the other homes that are in that assessment area. In my opinion, if I would, had to have looked at a house and it was next to that, I wouldn't buy it. My husband and I moved here because it is a golf course community with the amenities that we like to use, and we strongly oppose the SUP request.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Ma'am, you indicated that it does not meet, does not fit the criteria, and the criteria's been spelled out. Is there specifics?
Meaning it's for single families, so residential R1 is for the single-family home. And so currently, as it stands today, that property is not zoned for that, or is zoned for what they're asking, which is why they are asking for an SUP.
Right, which has a set of criteria that we've already discussed.
That is correct.
Okay, I thought maybe there was more to it.
I just don't want it.
Okay. There you go.
Bryn Morgan, followed by Steve Hanlon.
Hi, I'm Bryn Morgan. I live at 4600 East Inverness Drive in Post Falls, Idaho. My primary objections here are to the point of fit, which was actually specified by the Planning Committee. This doesn't fit in our community. We've all driven that point home. But I researched it using the documents, starting in 1987 from the Planning Commissions through to the 2002 amendment to the PUD, through to this today. And it's obvious to us, to all of us, that we have a planned golf course community. There's only one reason that anybody's operated any commercial ventures in it, because we're centering around a commercial operation of a golf course. That is the sole reason we're standing here today. That is the only reason. The building that they had bought on that property, which is still zoned residential, was the clubhouse. And when that was moved to the other side and the golf course was expanded because the tee was moved, this commercially-designed building was left sitting there and repurposed to good use. And we all supported that with a few caveats in 2002. That's why you see that there can be a bistro. That's why you see small retail. That's why you see the massage, in fact, in 2002, it was specifically about bringing in the spa and a massage training studio. That was all allowed. That same 2002 document is clear. The grassy area that was the putting green that they'd like to develop would be left alone, that there would be signage that had to conform with our neighborhood. All of this spells to me the very intent that I think we all feel. This is inconsistent with our neighborhood commitment, that we are not to be multi-use zoned. We're not, we're afraid of commercial creep. We have a residential neighborhood in which we have invested and participated as active participants with that existing building in a symbiotic relationship, as we do with the golf course. We're in a symbiotic relationship. We benefit them, they benefit us. That's what we have done, and that's what we're, only thing we're asking from that property to continue. It's inconsistent to now bring in other commercial ventures and to develop something else in that area with the neighborhood that we have built, which we work hard toward. That's really the root of this thing. It's not just R1. It's not just a collection of houses. We're talking about a group of people who, by the way, are in the age group that you think you're about to service. We work together to voluntarily police our CCNRs. We're the ones that worked with the city to landscape Sterling coming up the hill. We bought the flags. This is an incredibly cohesive neighborhood, and we have worked to retain the residential, primarily golf course, community that we live in. We actively participate with that. And I think personally, it's a little galling to me because I stood on my front porch on Halloween this year and handed out 370 pieces of candy. Over 200 children came to my front porch. And you know how many of them lived in my neighborhood? Zero of them. Zero of them. People of the City of Post Falls bussed and trucked and trailered and drove their children to our neighborhood because they know our neighborhood, which is decorated to the hilt for their children, is inclusive, safe, and welcoming, right? This is more than just an accidental group of homes that are together. We are a unit as a community, and all we're asking is that commercial ventures in our community be neighbors to us and participate with us as it was intended. This is not that intention. Thank you.
No, 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 no. Sorry, folks. Sorry, folks. This is not a gymnasium. Please, let's follow some decorum. She did a very nice job, and we'll acknowledge it.
Boy, that's a tough act to follow.
Yeah, Mr. Hanlon, one sec, please, followed by Hank, is it Lovell?
My name is Steve Hanlon. I live at 751 North Sky Court, and I'm here to talk to you about some of the exhibits that you folks got in your packets that might be a little misleading. And I don't know if you have the packets in front of you. I brought some low-tech slides for you. This is the map that shows the R1 zoning that we have up at the Highlands. On the first notice of public hearing we received back in November and the notice for this appeal, they both correctly state that the subject site is zoned R1 residential. The packets for both notices contained two maps concerning zoning. Map number one, this is the yellow one, and this is the subject site here. That's labeled zoning map for Highlands Home for Assisted Living. Map number two, however, and this is in your packet. This one says future zoning map. What the heck is future zoning? This map is incorrectly labeled and shows the subject site in red indicating future commercial zoning. That's not true. That's misleading. And according to what I was told by the planner, it should have been labeled future land use. Now, while I was watching Bob Slid's staff presentation, that slide's been modified. And if I do think you have a chance for rebuttal, ask them about that. That's important because it's misleading to you folks who are going to make a decision tonight about our subdivision. That may sway your vote if you're thinking, "Well, it's already going to be commercial. What the heck?" That's wrong. That's wrong. And that's my concern, is council members may see the future commercial zoning label and make a decision for the appeal partially based, anyway, on misinformation. Your decision should be simple tonight. The proposed project does not meet the single-family zoning requirements, nor does it provide a service to the local residents in accordance with the existing PUD policy. Therefore, I respectfully request that you deny the appeal and uphold the Planning and Zoning's reasoned decision. And I have one more thing that came up to me, and I've got a minute left here. During the presentations, and I'm talking about things that are a little misleading, the footprint of this building has been represented to be 7,400 square feet, and they said there might be something upstairs there, too. That's another 2,000 square feet. So it's a 9,200-square-foot building that you're talking about that squeezed in at the northeast corner of their lot. When Bob Coles built the subdivision and put in the clubhouse, he centered that clubhouse. It's very aesthetically pleasing. This building that's being proposed is right up against the neighbors there. Not aesthetically pleasing at all. And in the staff review, they said that they would permit up to 50 percent greater than that footprint. Guess what? That's not a restriction. That's a larger-sized building. That's 11,000 square feet. So even though they're initially thinking they're going to put 9,200 square feet in, the city is allowing up to 11,000 square feet. Just too large. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lovell, followed by Jerry Starzinski.
Hey, I'm Hank Cavelli.
Cavelli, I'm sorry. I couldn't tell if that was an I, and I couldn't tell if it was a C, and I took a guess and I was wrong. I apologize.
Thank you, council members and mayor. My name's Hank Cavelli. I've been a resident of the Highlands for at least 12 years, lived in the old Highlands while the new, this current addition was being built. I'm sure you all have visited living facilities of this nature before. I happen to have, just reminiscing about how long I've been in assisted living facilities, minimum of once or twice a week for the last 35 years. I can tell you that the use and the traffic has been way underestimated. I was in one actually last night. I was there with a physical therapist who walked in, a occupational therapist that walked in. I was with, I saw four family members being visited. That's six right there, two people working in the facility. Somebody came in and brought food. That's just seven people in the half hour I was there. One physician at the time, but the use is much higher than I think you've been led to believe. At first, when we had this meeting in November, a rosy picture was painted of Grandma and Grandpa walking throughout the golf course area. I can assure you, this is not the case. Basically, statistically speaking, of course, 40 percent of these people do not have command of their ADLs. They have to be fed, they have to be walked. 50 percent of them have organic brain syndrome. Because of this, even in our state, we have to have, due to cognitive impairment of most of the individuals in these facilities, they are locked down. They have to have locked doors. They do not know the codes for, so they can't go in and out freely. In addition, you have to have an area of, that's acceptable as an exterior yard. Last I saw on the plans, all the beautiful grass that's there is going to be taken away. They're going to be left in this yard that they have to have that also has to be fenced and contained. Well, right now, we'll be in an area of cement or the driveways that they say we're going to use for the four parking spots that have been allocated. More importantly, I've discussed this proposed facility with the original architect. His name is Dale Elmer Smith. He stated the original PUD unequivocally stressed that any and all business structures must be ancillary to the betterment of the golf course and the Highlands area. This facility that has been proposed, whether it be eight- or 16-bed structure, certainly wouldn't qualify, in my opinion, since there was a previous written intention and philosophy concerning the Highlands golf course development. This proposal being made tonight circumvents the standards of betterment of the golf course community and the individuals that live in this community. And we're all fairly upset about it, as you can see. It obviously will erode property values, increase the probability of crime and traffic, as we've already mentioned, but it's not part of this active, wonderful community that we live in. I want to thank all of you, and hopefully, we will have your opinion in our favor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavelli, and again, I apologize for the mispronunciation and butchering of your name. Mr. Starzinski, followed by, and I'm going to ask on this one, Eric Levy?
Right.
Wow, I got one right. You're up next, sir.
Good evening. I want to just say, I don't know how you handled Starzinski, and we're having difficulty with Imlee. Anyway.
It's all in the writing.
My wife printed it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, council staff, city staff, honored guests, I want to thank you for going first. It'll cut my presentation by a lot. You've heard so much already, and I need to take a little bit of a different tack, perhaps, because when I learned of this, I was a little bit taken aback. It took me back to the November meeting, which most people there, if not everybody, was already also in attendance for, in which the sentiments, the concerns, the issues of the people, permanent residents of the Highlands, were expressed quite well. And this is more than a "not in my backyard" issue. My first question is, what has been done to resolve the issues, the concerns that were brought up back in November, even to ameliorate any of these? If nothing has been done, then we are here for only one purpose, as I see it, and that's to go through the process of overriding, overriding the will of 96 percent of the residents up there? overriding a five-to-one vote of our own city council's Planning and Zoning Commission to override? Nothing's been done? I struggle now because the last, I hadn't been in this position for quite a while. The last time I had to worry about being articulate is at my daughter's wedding, and that didn't work out too easy either. But the second point that I would like to make is, everybody has the right to due process. Everybody has the right to an appeal. We understand that, and that's supposedly why we're here. I don't need to tell you people what the job is. But when the will of 96 percent of the people is sought to be rebuked, when the will of the Planning and Zoning Commission of our city seeks to be rebuked, when the city's own comprehensive plan is to be rebuked, and to alternate, alternative measures that can be taken, proposed at also the November meeting, are also to be rebuked, I got to scratch my head. I think it's clear. In his poem, "Mending Wall," Robert Frost contends that good fences make good neighbors. What's being proposed is not fences, they're barricades, blockades, which can... What's being proposed is not fences, they're barricades, blockades, which can only serve to separate. The Highlands is a welcoming committee, a welcoming community. I know that. We know that. This isn't a way to be welcomed. It's difficult. So I encourage...
Thank you, sir. Time's up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Levy, followed by Owen Gerald?
Yeah.
Was that right?
Yeah.
I got two in a row.
Thank you. My name is Eric Levy. You heard from my wife, Louisa, and our attorney earlier. Thank you very much for your time. I was wondering if we could, if I could pull up the slide from Sandy where she had said the, what the denial was, if it's possible? Can we flip this back over? Yeah, hold on. Is this counting against my time? There was one, there was one argument that was made. I don't see it. There were several that were missed from the reasoned decision. So the discussion was that it was against the will of the residents, or that it did not conform to give the residents something additionally that they needed. There were three things that went against not just that one. One of the council members had asked if there were any other points. So specifically, whether implementation of the special use would or would not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district. Your planning commission decided, no, it would not. Quote, additionally, the residential use, assisted living facility would not be on a separate lot as generally contemplated in the zone. As such, we conclude that the requested special use is not consistent with the purposes of the zoning. So criteria number one was not met. That was not discussed by Sandy in her presentation. Criteria number two, we cannot fight. Criteria number three, I strongly disagree with, that this will not combat the health, safety, or welfare of the public. I think that property assessment values is one major thing of health, welfare, and safety. Also, we've been told that there, this facility will not be noxious in any way, and in my final minute, I'll get back to why I don't agree with that. Number four of the criteria that were listed, whether the proposed use will or would not comply with the goals and policies found within the conference of plan. This was, of all of the policies, cited twice for not meeting the plan. Again, this was not referenced in Sandy's rebuttal. Also, we were told that this would not be a medical facility. This is an absolute fallacy. This is a medical facility. This is governed and state sanctioned and licensed. I'm a board certified psychiatrist. I currently am the medical director of a residential 16-bed facility. I have worked in facilities like this as an attending, down to someone who changes sheets before I was even in medical school. To say that facilities like this aren't noxious is really, really preposterous. The person that trained me, his name was Mark Snowden. He currently runs the University of Harborview Geriatric Psychiatry Fellowship Program. In my training, Dr. Snowden told me that you could tell the quality of an assisted living facility by the smell as soon as you walk in, looking at the garbage outside of it. This is how a good facility is distinguished from a bad facility, on the basis level of care. I have seen facilities that are not anything that you would want to spend time in or have your loved ones in. My property shares the, that this would go against in my backyard. This is not something that I would like. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of you listening to our concerns. Again, this is not a not in my backyard argument. It's just not appropriate.
Thank you, doctor. And last up, Owen Gerald.
Hello. My name's Owen Gerald. I'm here on behalf of Audrey Oats. I live at 1593 East Mullen Avenue, right in between the other three of these. And let me tell you, I'm inundated with sirens and lights, because usually when you have an ambulance, you have a fire truck. And I know, and they are continuously, I live right across the police department, and it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And not only that, it causes my dog to howl all the time. But you will be inundated with lights and sirens. Even if they shut them off, you're still going to have the lights up there, because I see them all day long and all night long. I'm up until 11:30 at night, and there's lights all the time. Usually, the sirens aren't too bad at night, but the lights are always there. I don't know if someone's getting stopped in front of my house, or a fire truck's going by, or an ambulance, or anything else, but there is a lot of noise to go along with this. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Sir. Now it's time for rebuttal.
Let's get my notes in order. Again, Sandy Young for the record. I think I would like to start out with some facts that there were questions you had asked of some of the residents, and we had actually done some investigation, and so I want to give you some information that we obtained the first time around. On 11/7/29...
Sandy?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
On 11/7/29, we contacted Cootney County Assessor's Office and talked with the appraiser, Jeff Hurt, who's a commercial appraiser. And it was his opinion that the construction of this 16-bed facility would not affect property values either way. They wouldn't go up, and they wouldn't go down.
Folks, 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 no comments, please. Everybody respected you when you were speaking, please do the same. Thank you.
And with regard to the one person that spoke that said, I had stated that property values wouldn't be affected, that was not my comment. That came from the planning commission, so I just wanted to clarify that for the record. There was a lot of testimony tonight on concerns about ambulances, lights, and sound. We also had that question back before we met with her, or presented to the planning commission. So one of our senior engineers met with Gerald Archer, who, as you know, is battalion chief for Cootney County Fire and Rescue. He wanted to obtain data on EMS calls to assisted living facilities that are in this area, so those five that are here now. Based on the similar facility nearby with 32 beds, and that's Riverside Harbor, Cootney County Fire and Rescue responded to 15 calls in the entire year of 2019. So I think it's safe to assume with 16 beds, it would probably be eight calls in 2020 We heard talk about this, about this not being an appropriate place from a standpoint of other locations that are outside of areas that already have development, as the planning commission found, and I know as you as a council support, this is infill development, and it's infill development that is allowed by your ordinance and also by Idaho code. With regard to Mr. Smith's testimony about the variance, that variance wouldn't be an appropriate venue for something like this. Idaho code does require that a topographic hardship be present in order for a variance to be approved. What we would do in order to build multiple buildings would be to present a minor subdivision to the city. That's an administrative process that doesn't come to public hearing. And that would be necessary to construct more than one structure. I feel like there's, there's been some misconception about what it is that is outright allowed and what this is asking for. And when I heard Ms. Oats speak, I almost felt like she should be our biggest proponent, because with this 16-bed one structure comes all of those lighting standards, landscape standards, stormwater standards, everything that I listed, plus everything you know to be there, and the city, any of you can put on as a requirement, versus no requirements for the one structure. And I believe she said she was about 45 yards away. This structure is not even two stories high, because that second floor is just office, but it's built in the rafters. So to know that a three-story building is an outright allowed use per city standards on more than one building versus one building, again, that's one and a half stories. The planning commission really didn't have the advantage of, of having Idaho code right there in front of them, just looking for my sheet, when we did the presentation. It was only after the hearing closed that Warren Wilson presented that information, saying, you know, per code, this is an outright allowed use. I did, I don't, I don't mean this in any way to be disparaging to the planning commission, but I felt like they had already deliberated in their minds, and that information coming late was not considered as deliberately maybe as it could have been, had it have been presented earlier. And that wasn't Mr. Wilson's fault. That was equally our fault for not doing that. I heard some concerns about traffic, but city engineering did look at the proposal and found that the existing street network would support and be more than adequate for this use. I heard about the number of residents when Ms. Levy spoke that were in opposition to this, but I guess my thought was, this is not a popularity contest. It's, it's, every person that has built a home in the Highlands had no more right to build that home than my client does to build the home for eight beds. Again, it's a right in that zone. So I won't beleaguer it. In closing, there's two options before you tonight. One is to approve this request for a building less than two stories with conditions, and the second is to deny it, in which case, there's always the option of constructing multiple homes with as many as a two and a half acre site will reasonably accommodate, and there will be no opportunity for the landscape, the stormwater, the lighting, the parking. This is all things you know. I just want to close by saying, by law, as an employer, I have to hire the best candidate for a job regardless of color. Our public school systems, by law, have to educate a child with special needs in a regular classroom. It's not up for grabs, not up for discussion. And by law, elderly are allowed by this law to be in a neighborhood, even this neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, we've been patient, we've been tolerant, we've listened.
And I'm...
Please don't do that.
Stand for questions, if you wish.
Any questions of Sandy? That, I will close the public hearing. Council, we'd like to start.
I have a question about the consequences of one of the speakers, and thank you all for being here. This is first and third Tuesday of every month at 6 o'clock, and you're all welcome to come back again. What are the consequences of this council of...
Carrie, lean forward, please. Thank you.
Of taking the suggestion of one of the speakers to disregard Idaho code.
If it gets appealed, you'll lose and get to pay attorney's fees. You don't get to avoid nor the law. We don't have that privilege. We're a city governed by rules, and we're bound to follow those rules, or there are consequences.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Spoken like an attorney.
Anything else, Carrie? Oh.
I, I, with Counselor Thorson, thank you all for being here. It's awesome. I love to see the community involved, and we don't see this many very often. I think it starts with personal property rights. We all own property, or most of us do. We get to do with it what we want within the scope of the law. In this particular case, even though this company is in Texas, or wherever they're at, they own the property, and they get to use it or do something with it within the scope of the law. Whether they're from Texas, I was born in Washington, I own property, I still get to do what I want with it within the scope of the law. We are governed by ordinances and policies that spell out what we can and cannot do in the city of Post Falls. This area is zoned R1. Within the R1 zone, someone who owns property can apply for a special use permit to do something other than just build a house. That's what we're all here for. Our job is to measure the impact of that special use permit, whether it's traffic, or it's lights, or it's sirens. It's like, how much of an impact is this going to have on the people around it? I asked several questions about property values. Did anybody come with any solid evidence that this was going to impact their property values? The only person who presented any information was a proponent who checked with the county who said, no, we don't, we're not going to diminish property values, just because. I appreciate the fact that there's so many of you here. I appreciate the fact that somebody walked around, got a petition, got everybody signing it. That's awesome. Problem is, we can't consider it. This is not a voting matter on a particular subject like this. We don't, it doesn't matter whether 100% of the people in the Highlands want this or not. If it complies with the ordinances, we have no other choice but to approve it following state law. Counselor Wilhelm, Counselor Borders, and myself, all served on planning and zoning. I rarely, in my six years on this council, have only disagreed with them on rare occasions. 90% of the time, 199% of the time, they get it exactly right, and I appreciate the work that they do. This is one time when I think they might have missed something. It's a difference of opinion as to whether or not this complies with the policies and the ordinances established for the city. In this particular case, I feel like it did comply. I believe that's all I have. I guess it comes down to, somebody said, how many times can they appeal? This was presented to planning and zoning. Under our guidelines, our laws, she has the opportunity to come before us as a city council, those people that are elected by you, to appeal that decision. She's done that. We'll make a decision tonight, and that should be the end of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Joe, you want to move your microphone forward, too?
Yeah. So just to clarify what we can and cannot actually consider, there's a lot of testimony, and again, thank you for everybody for being here and your testimony, that had to do with the ability of the potential residents to cross streets, walk on sidewalks, what medical attention the mayor may not need. We can't consider any of that. You know, I used to have an elderly neighbor in a single-family house, and ambulances came there on a fairly regular basis, and there's no way I could go to the city council and say, hey, I don't want, you know, somebody who's old to move in next to me in a single-family home. I can't consider that for a, for a assisted living facility either. So bear that in mind. You know, we've heard what you said, but if we consider that, we get fined and go to jail. So all that sort of stuff, what medical attention may be necessary, can't be considered. It's, it's not legal. There was a lot of, several testimony about building it somewhere else to be more ideal on Mullen by the other facilities there. The tricky part is that the, the proponent here, the applicant, doesn't own that property. They own the property where they own it, so we can't make those decisions of where they can build it on places that they don't own. So we can't consider that either. I live in Riverside Harbor. There is a assisted living facility there. I have never heard a single complaint about it, so I don't think it brings that much stuff. However, the most compelling, compelling argument to me is that the PUD and the amendment doesn't allow for this sort of thing. allow for this sort of thing. None of you folks signed up for it when you bought your property, so I will agree with you that if you don't want this proposal there, then it's not part of the PUD. The danger of that is that there is by law, by right, they can build an assisted living facility up to eight beds, and they can build multiple of them. And if they do, it won't ever come in front of us. There's nothing we can do about it. We can't say it needs to be more than five feet away from the property line. We can't say it has to be shorter than 35 feet. So I have a feeling that this is coming anyway. So me personally, I've heard you guys, it's not in the PUD, you don't want this, I'm going to side with you. What's coming, though, is possibly something bigger and more obtrusive, so be aware of that.
Mr. Anthony.
Again, thank you all for coming tonight. When I first looked at this, I kind of thought, "Does it fit up there?" It does seem kind of out of place. But then, looking at Idaho state law, looking at our ordinances, what they've done is, everything they've done is what we have set through our city code and has been set previously. I think there is some protection that we can give with the PUD that if it's not a PUD, that we wouldn't be able to give you that protection. So I think overall, we're trying to look out for the rights of the Highlands up there, but then also we know that we have to obey our city ordinances and our state laws. So it's a very tough decision. I know everybody here spoke from their heart in these neighborhoods, and we've listened to you, and I think we need to look at what's going to protect the city too and protect the citizens. But thank you all for coming.
Mr. Borders.
I think my question probably is to Mr. Cafferty as it relates to the PUD.
Hey, Lynn, excuse me, could you scoot your microphone a little closer?
Yeah. As I see it, the PUD amendment in 2002 is very clear about what could be used, what this property could be used for, and it was very limited in their language in the information that was provided to us. So how does that impact what we're talking about right now?
If the amendment or the original PUD had allowed this, they wouldn't be here today. It would be an allowed use. Under your R1 zoning, which is what the area is in question, which is subject to a planned unit development, which allows certain limited commercial uses, within the R1, you are allowed by special use to have this type of use if you, if you, the body, decision-maker, find that it meets the four criteria for approval. And so it's separate and apart from the planned unit development. If it were allowed, we wouldn't be here because of being allowed to use.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I used to live at the Highlands, so very beautiful community indeed. My comments and my question, I would like Mr. Cafferty to speak on what Peter Smith said about the variance. I know Sandy spoke about it. I'd like to know if our legal counsel agrees with her. And also, the statement that keeps coming up over and over is that the PUD stated that only things could go in that lot right there, that, by the way, was an underlying commercial zone. So it is an R1 zoning now, but the land use was a commercial zone on that lot. If somebody wants to go back and do some investigating, that is true. And that being said, it really doesn't matter, but when the, if it is specifically said in the amendment for the PUD that anything built on that lot would need to serve the residents in the Highlands, I'd like to see that. I haven't seen that. So first on the variance, if you would.
Ms. Young is correct. The variance is to the bulk placement on a specific piece of property that doesn't allow, it has to be site-specific, and under the law, allowing a different type of use is not appropriate grounds for a variance. A variance is if you have an odd, generally, an odd-shaped or geologic or geographic, I guess geologic, rocks and slopes and things like that that allow or that preclude normal development of the site. The variance allows for exceptions to the normal placement, the setbacks, the bulk on a specific site, and so that's what a variance is for. It wouldn't be to allow a separate type of use. And so your other question, I don't have that in front of me. You may be able to, well, we can't because we've closed the record. If you wanted to open the record again to gather more information, I think that's within the council's purview, but at this time, the record's closed, and so we can't present more evidence to you than what's already been presented this evening.
Thoughts, Linda?
Well, I actually, I actually believe that under the ADA and the Americans with disability and this R1 zone, that this is probably an allowed use. I believe it's an allowed use. However, I am concerned about what that amendment said and where that falls into the law. If the amendment said that the uses on that lot, and I think many of you people said this, must serve the residents in the Highlands. If it said that, does that override the, everything, really everything that we're talking about?
I don't have it in front of me, so I can't say what it says, but that sounds a lot more like CCNRs than it would zoning requirements. And a specific decision may have the ability to limit certain things, but it's not within the purview of a specific decision to override a city ordinance that has other policies. So it calls for a bit of speculation. So on a general principle, I would say no, that limitations such as it may be would not be able to override the city's ordinance, meaning the planned unit development may have one thing, but this is a special use permit separate and apart from the planned unit development. If there was no planned unit development, you could still make this request for a special use permit in the R1 zone because of this. And I think it also bears mentioning, as you stated earlier, while the zoning may be R1, it's part of the special use, excuse me, part of this planned unit development, and anyone who drives there, anyone who's driven by it, you're familiar with it, I'm familiar with it, everybody in the room's familiar with it, it's a commercial area. Yeah, it may be zoned R1, but through this planned unit development, it's a residential, I mean, it's a commercial use. And this is another commercial use on commercial use property within a planned unit development that's R1. And I don't, myself, based upon the testimony I received tonight, I don't imagine that a, what was it, a massage school really is to gain students from the Highlands. I could be wrong. And I would gather, from my experience visiting the businesses up there, that the majority of the people that frequent those businesses are not residents of the Highlands because of the out-of-state plates and things like that. So I don't think it's a stretch to say the, all the uses in the Highlands are for the benefit and limited to the use of the residents of the Highlands. I'm not a resident. I go to some of those establishments. Anecdotal, admittedly, not in the record, but I don't know that it's really germane as to whether or not the benefit to the Highlands has anything to do with a special use permit because that's not what your zoning requires, that's not what a special use permit requires, and that's not part of the four criteria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf.
If I may, I'm just reviewing Exhibit S4, which was the decision that was made back in 2002 on the PUD, and it doesn't specify anything about that there's anything that says it has to be, no specifics.
I think it was originally the 1987. I think that Bryn, I can't think of her last name, I think she's the one that mentioned it, 1987 that might have been, that Bob Coles in the original development.
Well, I think as Mr. Cafferty pointed out, it's not a matter of the record of our decision tonight. If it needed to be, it should have been presented, I guess. I would make a motion to accept the request, overturn the planning and zoning decision, and accept the appeal and the application for the special use permit.
Motion second. Further discussion?
Yes, I do. Are you going to add the five conditions that Veritas had in their presentation? Maybe Bob can answer.
Got it. Those are the conditions that she had listed in hers.
Yes, I would amend my motion to include those five conditions.
Motion second.
I just wanted to make a comment. I think that we are, there's a big difference between Idaho code, our ordinances, regulations, and what we have to adhere to versus what our personal feelings might be on this. So just wanted to make that clear.
I have one question as well. During discussion, I can't remember when it was, there was discussion that if this is approved, there would be no windows on, I can't remember which side. It wasn't in here, but I thought it was discussion, something came up, that there would be no windows on one side of the building overlooking the neighbors.
The north.
Was it the north side?
Mm-hmm.
Are those addition-- That had previously come up, I believe, at the Planning Commission, and prior to that, it was part of the staff's discussions during the application process. Yes.
Is it part of the staff recommended conditions?
Could it be added? It's not. Specifically, but it was basically something that was kind of agreed upon with the applicants, that there wouldn't be any windows in the second story so as to not be able to view the neighbors through the backyard, essentially, I believe is the idea behind it.
Can we add that to the condition?
Mr. Wolf, are you willing to amend your--
I will amend my motion to include no windows facing--
North.
--other properties.
The north side on the second floor?
Second floor.
Okay.
As for the--
Second stand?
Yeah, second.
Any more discussion? That roll call, please.
Thorson? An "I" vote is--
In favor, to allow it.
Okay, I have to vote "I." Wolf?
"Aye."
Wilhelm?
"Aye."
Malloy?
"Nay."
Borders?
"Nay."
Anthony?
"Aye."
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, would you like staff to draft up a recent decision and bring it back to you based upon your decision and deliberations this evening?
Please. Let's take five, please. Let's take five, please. Next up on the agenda is unfinished business, and tonight we have none. Citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to testify before council on an item that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, please come forward. Name for the record, please, Kim. Thanks for your patience.
I love democracy in action. It's quite overwhelming. My name is Kim Brown. Box 1093, Post Falls, Idaho, eight-three-eight-seven-seven. I had actually come tonight to make a transition, and this is a positive comment, with regard Because the Board of Directors of the society was able to come in and sit, I don't have my overwhelming support. But it was meant to be an introductory welcome of our new president and our new officers to meet and to thank all of you for the hard work, and to make a transition and recognize the many efforts of Clay Larkin with regard to historic preservation. So it was meant to be a learning tool for them, and for those of you that don't know his efforts. So I wanted briefly to go through those, because the foundation is built for the future. Of course, Clay was a friend in large and small ways. He contributed to our veteran file, to the display north of the Post Falls Museum, and on nine eleven, he contributed to the ringing of the old church bell in a very unusual way. So we're sharing all of his, all of the, all of our history actually isn't just on display. And I will say that you are walking into the footsteps of a lot of mayors and council people. Some of them were postmasters and head of the boards of directors of your council business, and they belong to a lot of groups and organizations, and they still had time to run their businesses. I don't know how these guys did it. But in order for us to share that kind of history, it's motivational, and those are some of the things that are housed in our files. Clay worked on getting Post Falls recognized as a city heritage city. Rathdrum, Coeur d'Alene, none of our neighbors have that designation, and Clay had the foresight to recognize that there are a lot of aspects of that designation that will continue to guide us in the future. So that's a pretty cool thing for Post Falls. Also, the Post Falls Historical Society has been recognized by Idaho State Historic Preservation Council with the Estopurpetua Award. This was a big deal, because this was way before we had a museum. And a lot of our volunteers were motivated totally by someone just recognizing volunteer efforts. And of course, all of you know Clay was a longtime volunteer. He was motivated by that, and he recognized that. One of the things I really enjoyed, I used to go in and bug him a lot, as I also bugged some of you, and I have also worked with some other mayors. But with the older mayors that were part of setting up the historical society, they were passionate that we would continue to preserve our history. So I'm talking about Cecil Lark and Clay Kent-Helmor. Clay joins them. A lot of them were, and Don Camps, were in there just making sure that our town doesn't forget its history. One of the things with the Estopurpetua Award that I recall was Clay Larkin met a bunch of us over here in the parking lot, and we went in the dark over to Spokane Street, and we were in a car going down to Boise. We stopped at Spokane Street, and this is before the stoplight was put in there, and a mother raccoon marched with her whole litter of raccoons down Spokane Street, stopping for Clay Larkin and a bunch of little volunteers on their way to the airport. He was that kind of guy. Post Falls was that kind of town. And unless you share some of those, and that's why I'm sharing these things for the record if anyone ever comes back and looks at them, that there's really a lot that goes on in this town that might not be the official record. So that's one of the things I enjoy about history. I worked with Clay and also the City Parks Department on sharing Camille and Quest for ten years. We reached out to five thousand of our Post Falls students. And in that time period, the mayor conducted himself the way an old soldier always does, with a great deal of respect to the Coeur d'Alene tribe, to anyone in attendance, and he was a model to those kids over a ten-year time period. The flags were raising high, and he definitely provided the leadership and decorum for, I don't think those kids will ever remember the mayor that set a fine example for the city of Post Falls. We don't have it anymore. It's logistically kind of hard to bring all of the students now into one small little area. But for those...
Excuse me, Kim, we're up at five. I'll let you finish.
Oh, okay.
But what I would do is welcome you back with your other, with your board members in another meeting.
All right.
To continue and introduce, if you would.
I didn't see my clock on there.
We'll give you another minute.
Okay, another minute. All right. Well, let me see what I can. I will encourage Mr. Mayor John, Ron Jacobson, I have quotations from our mayors down through the years. I like to grab those quotations and put them in our mayor's file, because they're really a symbol of what all you all do. Clay said, "I've enjoyed working with many Post Falls citizens." I'm going to try to get down here to his quotation. "I just love this community and what it represents. As you know, I'm always watching for opportunities to keep us up in the front. We are blessed by a long history of positive municipal government, and we have developed our own identity. We are recognized even nationally as being proactive, progressive, and professional. It takes a lot of folks to make that happen." At the same time, he wrote that rapid growth keeps us all challenged to do better and be prepared for the future. I will come back when I can bring the new board members, but I just want to thank you all for walking in the footsteps of Clay Larkin, and those of us that have worked on historic preservation, we welcome and we acknowledge your support.
Thanks, Kim. There's three things. First of all, I want to thank you for referring to the old mayors. Number two, the, that quote, I mean, I'm going to have to do a lot of work to come up with anything that lengthy that makes any sense. And number three, all those raccoons you saw, I think they live in my house now. Just to let you know.
I have Frank Henderson's. His was very succinct, so you can work on...
I'd like to get a copy of that.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Anyone else? He's getting serious. He's taking his coat off. Name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Scott Howard. I live at twenty-eight fifty-five North Sandtrap Way, and I want to thank you. This is my first city council meeting. Wanted to see what this was all about, and will be coming more often. This is pretty awesome. I wanted to address you directly on my concern with traffic lights. I've been bringing this up with the traffic department over the last ten years, and feel that my concerns have fallen on deaf ears, or at least ears that are unwilling to do anything about it. Mainly, the traffic lights initially were the ones on Pleasant View and River Bend, Pleasant View and Fifth, Pleasant View and Celtae's. I know the city of Post Falls does not have control over the two off-ramp and on-ramp lights there on the freeway in Pleasant View. However, at any given point in time, if you're planning on going from Pleasant View southbound, or, I'm sorry, from the south of the freeway going north, or north from Celtae's down to the south side of the freeway, you will stop at every single red light consistently. And this is a point of frustration. I ask that you guys make some effort to get changes made, especially to the River Bend light, that if it's raining, it won't even detect your car sitting there. You have to get out, go push the crosswalk sign, and get back in your car before the light will change. Very frustrating. Additionally, the city of Post Falls has recently added traffic lights in the Spokane-Celtae's intersection area, namely on Mullen and Spokane, and there's one on each side of Spokane Street. I don't remember exactly the names of those streets, but it's a couple blocks away from Spokane. The intended goal was to encourage traffic to go away from Spokane and Celtae's, to decrease it, but now it's created gridlock there on more times than I can count. The lights at Mullen and Celtae, Mullen and Celtae's on Spokane are not synced in any way, except maybe to make sure you stop. And it seems like the Mullen traffic direction, east and west, is prioritized over north and south on Spokane, which creates longer delays there as well. I ask that you revisit that idea and possibly remove those lights as they cause additional congestion and traffic slowdowns that weren't there before, and take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir. I know our engineers are here. I know for a fact that the lights on Spokane and Mullen, it's been quite a process, but they are in the process of learning and being programmed to eliminate that concern, and they will look out at the Pleasant View lights for you as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And come back again.
Yeah, welcome. They're not always as exciting. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Kevin McGuire. I just wanted to voice my concerns about the rapid residential developments and the increase in traffic in the area. Specifically, some of the developments I've noticed that have concerned me is the massive apartment complex on the south side of Fourth Avenue in Celtae's, just a couple blocks up here, and also the, it seems like every time I drive down Chase or McGuire Road, there's brand-new subdivisions that have just popped up. I haven't yet had a chance to study the various planning documents and the development agreements, but I plan to do that and to gain a better understanding. It's part of the reason I came here, to figure out how the council operates and to see how I could participate in that. And I'm also very concerned about the traffic lights, especially west, north, and east of Spokane and Celtae's. It seems like it's going to be a similar situation to Highway ninety-five and Coeur d'Alene, where it's going to be gridlocked, and it's only going to continue to get worse as the population increases.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate you taking the time and expressing your interest, and if you have questions of our planning folks and as far as the plans, et cetera, feel free to reach out to them.
Okay.
Thank you for taking the time.
I think we're working on the update to the conference of Plan, Honorable Mr. Mayor. There's some, maybe some future ability for greater participation.
Yeah, you may, you may want to get your name to our, probably our planning department. Would that be the best? To our planning...
Bob Seale, yeah.
The Bob Seale?
Right there.
Right, right here?
I got that right there.
Right up here in the first row? But if you want to, or just drop it off at the city and express your interest, and then if there's any meetings coming up to discuss that, they'd be sure to invite you.
Okay.
Good. Thank you for your time. Anyone else? Sit down, Ryan. Next up is new business, and tonight we have three items. Prairie Avenue, State Highway forty-one to Meyer Road, capacity improvement, grant application.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Robert Paul's Assistant City Engineer. A funding opportunity has come available through the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, and staff has prepared three grant applications which you're going to look at for potentially adopting support on it through resolution tonight. KMPO made a call for projects in December of this year for funding of projects through twenty, from twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-six for construction. There's estimated to be about ten million dollars available in that timeframe. The local match for any of those projects is seven-point-three-four percent. There's several factors which are up on the board before you. In order for a project to be eligible, all three projects that we are discussing this evening have been gone through. They are on the KMPO master plan, as well as the city's transportation master plan. Timing for program, all applications are due by next week, Friday, the fourteenth, and then they would be going through the balancing board after the KMPO hears them at March twelfth, and then they would be presented for inclusion within the state's transportation improvement program for twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-seven. The first project that we are recommending you support is the Prairie Avenue, State Highway forty-one to Meyer Road project. This is a joint application with the Post Falls Highway District. There's been a lot of dollars spent over the last few years with roadway improvements on north-south roadways in the region, especially government way. There is a need for good east-west connectivity, and this section of Prairie Avenue is especially important as Highway forty-one gets improved, improvements at the intersection, that if Prairie Avenue is not widened up, there'll be a bottleneck which could back up into the intersection. The Union Pacific Railroad Spur is going to be going away, or ITD is really close with final negotiations on the U.P. Railroad to get rid of that, and we feel that this will open up and create a good connection between Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene. The cost of the project is estimated at about five-point-two million dollars, of which the city's share is about eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of improvements, making the city's match sixty thousand dollars, or a little bit more than that, for, towards a five-million-dollar project that benefits not only the city and growth in the area, but the entire region. The second project we are looking at is the Prairie Avenue and Cecil Road capacity improvements. This is just on the west side of Highway forty-one, opposite the one we just looked at. This would make improvements on Prairie Avenue from just about Charlville Road to just west of Cecil Road, and make improvements along Cecil Road from Killdeer Avenue to Prairie. Right now, Cecil Road ends at Killdeer Avenue. A couple of benefits of this project, if it's not constructed by twenty-thirty-five, we anticipate levels of service in that area to operate at a level of service D or E, which means it's pretty much failing. These improvements would bring everything back into level of service B, which is above and beyond our normal minimum standard, and it would work really well with the growth in the area with potential tech park to the north, numerous subdivisions going in just to the west. It would also construct improvements that are needed with the future Tullamore Regional Sports Complex. Because of that, we talked with the Parks Department, and they're willing to put in sixty-two thousand dollars, which would be their share of the matched dollars. The remaining hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-six-odd dollars would come from transportation impact fees. The overall cost of that project is estimated at about two-point-eight million dollars. The third project we're looking at is a roundabout at the intersection of Pole Line Avenue and Chase Road. This one is estimated at about one-point-one million dollars. There's a fair amount of utility relocation that needs to be done with it and to squeeze it in. We have gotten the appropriate rights of way for the most part in the corners as subdivisions have been going in. The city's match, if this was to be successful, is about eighty-three million, or, excuse me, eighty-three thousand dollars on the one-point-one million dollar project. I stand for any questions you might have.
Rob, could you do me a favor and go back to the first slide on the Prairie Avenue, Highway forty-one?
That one there?
Yeah. Yes, please. Thank you. On that, the others you showed where funds would come from, would this be from impact fees?
This would also be from impact fees. All three projects would be utilizing transportation impact fee dollars. Because of the timing on the projects, we do not anticipate them needing any funding within the next two years. Prairie Avenue, both this one and the one on the other side of the road, are on our transportation impact fee list, but it's pending adoption by the city council.
And the roundabout at Chase and Pole Line, that was something that had been planned, but...
That has been on our transportation master plan since two thousand and four, and it is currently on our currently adopted impact fee list.
Thank you, sir. Comments, questions, Rob? That's a pretty good return.
Yeah.
That's okay.
A lot of good work there, Rob.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I would move, we need an action.
Yeah, we do.
Can we move on all three of them at once?
Can we do all of them once?
Sure.
I would move to approve the Prairie Avenue, Highway forty-one to Meyer Road capacity improvement grants application, the Prairie Avenue and Cecil Road capacity improvements grant application, and Pole Line Avenue and Chase Road roundabout grant application.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Rob, thanks for you and, Bill, your whole team for doing the work. I know grant applications are not easy. It takes a lot of time, and you look at what we invest and what we give back, and it's a huge benefit. So thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it. Ordinances and resolutions. Linda, I think you're going to be busy tonight.
Move to a place of ordinance on Idaho veneer zone
The city's match, if this was to be successful, is about $83 million, or, excuse me, $83,000 on the $1.1 million project. I stand for any questions you might have.
Rob, could you do me a favor and go back to the first slide on the Prairie Avenue, Highway 41?
That one there?
Yeah. Yes, please, thank you. On that, the others you showed where funds would come from, would this be from impact fees?
This would also be from impact fees. All three projects would be utilizing transportation impact fee dollars. Because of the timing on the projects, we do not anticipate them needing any funding within the next two years. Prairie Avenue, both this one and the one on the other side of the road, are on our transportation impact fee list, but that's pending adoption by the city council.
And the roundabout at Chase and Pole Line, that was something that had been planned, but-
That has been on our transportation master plan since 2004, and it is currently on our, currently adopted impact fee list.
Thank you, sir. Comments, questions, Rob? That's a pretty good return.
Yeah, yes.
That's okay.
A lot of good work there, Rob.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I would move, we need an action.
Yeah, we do.
Can we move on all three of them at once?
Can we do all of them once?
Sure.
I would move to approve the Prairie Avenue, Highway 41 to Meyer Road Capacity Improvement Grants Application, the Prairie Avenue and Cecil Road Capacity Improvements Grant Application, and Pole Line Avenue and Chase Road Roundabout Grant Application.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Rob, thanks for you and Bill, your whole team for doing the work. I know grant applications are not easy. It takes a lot of time, and you look at what we invest and what we give back, and it's a huge benefit, so thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it. Ordinances and resolutions. Linda, I think you're going to be busy tonight.
Move to place an ordinance on Idaho veneer zone change file number RZNE-0001-2019 on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Abstain.
Mr. Cafferty, want to read that one for us?
I think I got it ready here, because the older I get, it's harder to read off the screen, so. Sorry, I just stopped. So, "An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho." That's not it?
Yeah.
Zone change?
Yeah.
Yeah? Is that it?
Teresa, would you make sure that Mr. Cafferty signs up for vision insurance?
Oh, wait, no, I'm wrong. I am wrong.
Shannon was wrong.
Idaho veneer, zone change, right?
Yes, you're right.
Okay.
I am wrong.
And Shannon needs vision insurance.
I need some glasses.
I'll give you mine, but then I wouldn't be able to see. So, to begin again, excuse me, and I apologize for slowing the process down here. "An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for change in zoning classification for the land described in Section 1 of this ordinance from industrial (I) and smart code 4 (PRIN SC4) in PRIN to urban center smart code 5 (PRIN SC5) in PRIN, period, providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded and providing an effective date."
Move to approve the ordinance, Idaho veneer zone change file number RZNE-0001-2019, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Abstain.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance, Ruby Springs Annexation ANNX-0008-2019 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Cafferty.
"An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 5.60 acres located in the northwest quarter of Section 27, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning the annexed property single-family residential (PRIN R1) in PRIN, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof."
Move to approve the ordinance, Ruby Springs Annexation ANNX-0008-2019, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Move to place the ordinance, Green Meadows First Edition Annexation File Number ANNX-0002-2019 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Cafferty.
"An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 40 acres, legally described as a parcel of land, being a portion of Section 24, tracks 6, 7, 10, 11, and portions of tracks 22 and 23, Post Falls irrigated tracks, as recorded with Cootney County in Book C of Platts at page 78 of Section 25, Township 51 North, Range 5 West of the Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning the annexed property with a mix of single-family residential (PRIN R1) in PRIN, medium-density multifamily (PRIN R2) in PRIN, and community commercial services (PRIN CCS) in PRIN, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof."
Move to approve the ordinance, Green Meadows First Edition Annexation File Number ANNX-0002-2019, to direct, direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Abstain.
Motion passes, thank you.
I already did the other three, right?
Do we need to do these on separate resolutions now? We do need the resolution.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Move to approve the resolution, Prairie Avenue, Highway 41 to Meyer Road Capacity Improvements Grant Application.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to approve the resolution, Prairie Avenue and Cecil Road Capacity Improvement Grant Application.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Move to approve the resolution, Pole Line Avenue and Chase Road Roundabout Grant Application.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion? Roll call.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Yes, aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. administrative staff reports.
We have none tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. Mayor comments, you know, the only thing I want to say is that we don't always have 100 people at our council meetings. We don't always have 24 people testify, and I, I think the right, correct decision was made, and those, the two of you who voted no on it, I understand your positions, and I don't fault that at all. It was for the right reason, and I just, it's an honor to serve with people that actually look at all the detail and make the decisions based on what they believe is the right thing to do. So I, again, regardless of how it came out, I appreciate the way you folks handle that, and like I said, we don't get them very often, but it's, it's an honor when we do get it, the way you folks handle it, so I want to thank you very much. Council comments?
I'd just like to say you are just grateful that you weren't the tiebreaker.
I was going to vote. It was going to be my second time, so. Anybody else?
I have one. I brought this up before, but I'm seeing Dave back there. Black Bay Depot. When this is all said and done, you provide us with an audit of what this thing has caused. It's like every time I, every two weeks, I look at the checks, and we're writing more and more checks to Black Bay Depot. It's like, is this ever going to stop? But it comes down to, what I'm asking is, will you provide us with an audit of what this thing actually cost us, so that in the future, when we're considering either buying a new building, building a new building, or buying an old building and fixing it up, we'll have good information for making that decision?
Yes, you will get a detailed report on that. One reason you do see a continuous list of payments for it is we are acting as a general contractor on it, so we have a lot of subs, and our staff is doing a lot of work in addition to that. So instead of just one big contract going out, you're seeing it piece by piece.
Okay, fair enough.
And it will come to an end. We actually, in April, will be doing the dedication for it. Held up with waiting for the windows and doors to get in. They are in, and there's glass actually in, in it now, and it's buttoning up, so.
Thanks, Dave. Joe?
Just wanted to offer a quick apology to everybody here and everybody that's in the audience for being late. It usually takes me 20 minutes to get here. I planned 45, and it took 47, so.
To be honest, I was surprised you were here as early as you were.
That was crazy, so. Drive safe out there, folks. The roads are bad.
Were you at Mullen and Spokane Street?
Waiting to the line to change. I actually went Riverview because the freeway was backed down.
Linda?
I'd just like to thank city staff for all the extra help that you've given over the last few days. I appreciate it very much.
That's been very helpful. With that, the next motion is, all those in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourned, thank you.